The day of the blizzard, Patty and I watch it through the course of the year and generally, come the first of the year, we try to make a gauge. And, you know, we knew we were going to be very, very tight. So my intent the day of the blizzard was sit down and put a number together for you guys for a reserve on transfer. That didn't get done. We were working on that this year, this week here, and I've been out of town at a conference most of the week. So I did some preliminary work myself. Monday Patty took a look at it. We'll get that wrapped up. This is the first time I've ever done this and I was white knuckled over it. The first storm, I went with the regular amount of staffing that we usually do, extra staffing. And in these bigger events, you know, it comes in around $20,000. It was just under. And when Patty took a look, she said, after this storm, this is all we have left. And because I hadn't spoken to you guys yet and haven't spoken to the warrant committee at all, I bit my lip and we putting no extra people on for that second storm. And like I said, that was very uncomfortable. So we will be coming to you with a reserve on transfer request and...
For the first storm?
Well, it'll be to get us through the rest of the year.
Just don't tell them what you're...
Yeah, and realistically, it wasn't that the first storm kind of just put us to the point where I got to get the number in really quick and just, you know, because they hadn't had a conversation, we're going to roll the dice and hope nothing happens. But a very uncomfortable situation. I don't like to do that. It's one of those things too during these storms, like you say, for the most part from you guys have given me too much credit for our department because a lot of times in our department, it's one of those things where you have to throw that extra staff on because of the potential work that we're going to get involved in if it comes along. But, you know, especially this time where people were ordered not to be on the road, you know, we weren't all that busy, you know? Like Chief Wells said, we had a number of medical calls that we were out doing, but then, you know, that still does fall into relatively routine until you get ambulances stuck and sliding around.
So it's an expensive cost if...
It's an expensive cost...
If you don't need it.
If you don't need it.
But then it's...
And it's an expensive cost if you do need it as well. Like you say, I do go back to that time and that's firsthand experience. That was, that was my engine company that had those three calls back to back and, you know, you were, you were covered in sweat by the time you get back to the firehouse. It's like you say, it's a, to need help and not have help is a very, very, very uncomfortable place to be.
Sure.
As you said, otherwise your report that you submitted looked like it was a pretty normal quarter.
Yeah, just, yeah, pretty much a routine quarter for us, yeah. There's a, you know, a couple of fires cited there, but I, unless it's during regular business hours, I don't get called out unless it's a second alarm. And I've received calls on none of these. So, you know, the guys handled them quickly and, you know, repetitive investigations.
Very little in property damage on the...
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, it was, you know, it was, for want of a better term, you know, small kitchen fire, you know, possibly a barrel or whatnot knocked down very quickly, electrical fire, stuff like that.
That's good. Should we, if there's nothing else on the update, why don't we go on to the contract?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a three-year contract. Jack and I sat down last week and we negotiated. It is for fiscal year '16, '17, and '18. And the wage adjustment is at 2% for fiscal year '16.
I'll make a motion to...
What happens for '17 and '18?
We negotiate those at a later date.
Okay.
So I'll move to approve and sign a contract between the town and the Fire Chief, John J. Grant, Jr., for the period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? I had no questions. Been all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for joining us tonight.
My pleasure. Have a good night and say hopefully we get through these next couple of snowstorms all right as well. Take care.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, why don't we go back to the amendments to the traffic rules and regulations? And why don't we invite the planning director and Chief Wells up to join us for that?
You can say it to him.
Oh, did you want to do your report? Did you want to do Bill's report first?
Well, he has to get downstairs.
Okay. Chief, can you stick around for a little while longer?
I'm saying, yeah.
Okay. Okay. We need to get the planner down to the warrant committee. So, so Bill, you're here to give us an update on a few different projects.
Under the Planning Department itself, Planning Department assures careful stewardship of the town's land, environment, water, air, energy, et cetera, providing guidance and protection to ensure high quality of life for Milton residents today and into the future. Town planning involves research, analysis, strategic thinking, urban design, public consultation, public policy recommendations, implementation and management, development of land in the public interest, and has an important influence on the property values and our AAA bond rating. Our efforts have contributed to the town's qualifications and reputations as an award-winning community reportedly, repeatedly voted the best place to live by experts. We work to help developers navigate the process while adhering to established policies and laws of the town with an eye towards careful growth and finding innovative solutions while protecting the town, its neighborhoods, and its residents. Under some of the development updates for the last couple of months, East Milton Parking, Howard Sign Hudson is under contract with the town and the state to complete the design engineering and the development of construction documents for the project bidding. Howard Sign Hudson and the town have held two public hearings to update the community on the project's progress and to explain the eventual goals of the parking deck, a retooled park on the deck, upgraded signals, and crosswalks in the square area. The next step will be the 25% submittal to Mass Department of Transportation. The next meeting will be held by Mass Highway. Mass Highway is responsible for the 25 and 75% meetings. These public hearings are required to be run by Mass Highway by state and federal I did call Howard Sign Hudson to follow up on a timeline and we're still working on trying to get that 25% in by the end of February. We're still holding to bid documents by the summer and we're still holding to construction in 2015, the fall construction season.
So where would that put the 75% design in? Sometime in the summer?
That'll be early summer.
Early summer, okay.
Now, where we are now is Howard Sign Hudson submitted the design exception report to Mass DOT a couple of weeks ago. That should be the last piece that they need to approve us for that design hearing at the end, what we hope is the end of February. We haven't gotten much of a progress update from Mass DOT other than that they are reviewing the plans. We do know that the, our consultant within, our point person within Mass DOT is a guy named Al Miller, and he has called and said Federal Highway Administration is looking more closely into the town's air rights of the deck over 93. We're, I've spent several hours today, I know that I had Tim, my assistant, looking for any documents that discuss the air rights to the town. We're still looking, we still will look, we have to go back and deal with Mass Highway because they should have these same documents, but we don't seem to have documents stating about those air rights. But I'm pushing both our files and...
So the feds have a concern that we may not have air rights? Is that...
No, we know that the air rights come back to the state because the state owns the land.
The land, right, right.
So if you own the land, you own the air rights. But Federal Highway is the one who brought it up. And now they want to know, well, what is the process that was discussed in creating the deck itself? We have found documents that go back to the mid-'80s that, why the deck is only as small as it is right now. We know that it was originally planned to be a bigger deck. We have those documents or we have those from the annual reports, we have notice from the different selectmen meetings, and I'll take all of those, ship them into Mass Highway, and let them come up with their own dates for their own things at that same time. I do know that there were meetings that took place with then-Secretary of Transportation Fred Salvucci, Brian Donley, and Joe Manick. And all of these things talked this whole thing through. So we know when those meetings took place. It's just a matter of shipping all of that same documentation back to Mass Highway to give to Federal Highway for them to figure it out. At the same time, I did go through the same issue a couple of years ago with Congressman Lynch's office, so I'll be back dealing with their person down in Washington who does transportation. It's just a, we knew that Federal Highway would be a, be the longest reviewer and they are doing just that, taking the longest to do their review.
This is partially what, I mean, we had expected the 25% hearing to be a little...
We expected it to be in January.
Right.
Or even December, I think, even late last year.
It just keeps getting pushed and pushed.
And part it's the feds...
But they are doing the review. And for, for Mass DOT Department of Transportation to come back and say, you know, Federal Highway's already looking at it, they already have documents, they already have plans, so they've already started the process. That's a good thing.
Okay.
So Bill, just with the air rights, if you can't find them, are they on record somewhere?
Absolutely. It's just a matter of who, and that's...
But you would have needed those to actually build a deck initially, right?
She told me yesterday, and I've started yesterday looking, Tim and I were both hours going through books trying to find the information today. We'll get it.
So just, just from my knowledge, so Mass DOT approves the design and engineering?
Yes.
And then the feds have to approve it as well?
Yes. Because this is federal money.
It's federal money, but it's a, over, it's a state highway over a federal highway. It's a state park over a federal highway. Would that be correct?
State land over a federal road.
Right, okay.
So it sounds like it's a documentation issue right now.
Yeah.
But it's been a frustratingly slow process, so anything that we can do to try to move this along, and unfortunately, they're not controlling it. It's a state that's in control.
Luckily, luckily I did have Tim to be able to go through. Me having to go through four books about that big, try to go...
A minutes?
Every selectment's meeting trying to find minutes where discussion of East Milton deck was ever discussed, that's not the best use of my time. I went in one direction to look for stuff, I put Tim with the books, came back and said, here are the dates, stick with these. So he's actually been able to zero in and instead of going through this many books, he only has to go through this many pages.
You've answered a couple, I saw quickly before I left to come here, the new Milton, East Milton Neighborhood Association put out a couple of questions related to the deck. I think you've answered one in terms of, I think one was, when is construction going to start and we're saying...
I actually, when I sat down, I handed Cindy Christensen the whole list of answers to her questions.
Okay. One of the other ones was, was would there be any improvements before the construction? I kind of know the answer to that, but just to kind of get it out.
No. I mean, other than, you know, restriping streets in the spring, fixing existing potholes, making sure that the lights do work.
Yep.
We'll take care of those. If the lights go out, we'll fix those lights. We're not going to install a new system of lights.
No substantive...
Right. We're going to wait and get the entire system so that the entire area talks to one another.
Yep.
I mean, right now, when those lights, when those lights go out of sync, it's as silly as, there's somebody standing in the basement of the East Milton Firehouse talking on the phone while somebody else watches the light and try it.
It looks good to me.
All right, let's extend it out to 30 seconds. And then I get a call, would you please go down and look and see if it works? That's not how we want this system to work. That's not how the new system will work. It will all be smart computers talking, you know, smart signals talking to each other through the computer, not having to send somebody down to play with switches.
Bill, is this air rights issue going to tie up the 25% hearing or will that move forward while the federal...
It's going to move to 25.
Okay.
It might hold up to 75, but it's not holding up to 25.
Okay, that's good.
Second question, Bill, in terms of East Milton, I think I'd asked once before, and just if you've had any luck, we've got a Granite Ave project that, that Department of Transportation is...
Yes.
Is contemplating.
On the parking rest.
Streetscape and the office building, considering putting down there. And just trying to coordinate the two projects in terms of, is there anywhere for one to complement the other, where they're so close together? And, you know, can we get somebody actually looking at the two projects as, if not one project, projects that complement one another and...
I hear you, I agree with you. I do know who to ask. It's a case of, I've tried to concentrate on one, but I will take the other because I, I get your, I get your point. Other things in the square, the East Milton Movie Theater Building.
Looks great.
The Falcone Company bought the property at 556 Adams Street, and they bought the two houses on Church Street. All of their property is in the business, it's business zoned. The Falcones' plan continues to be to rehab the existing facades and the brick of the building. Some of the, they had to re-point the brick because when the structural engineer looked at it, they came back and said, it won't last the winter, which is a really good thing with all the snow we've just had because bricks would have been falling off. They wound up re-pointing the front and the side of the new building, of the front facade building. They're currently working with a team of architects and engineers to bring a new restaurant to the previous movie theater space. The Falcones have been through the zoning board of appeals to address the parking and the new use of the commercial space. The ZBA decision is being crafted at this time. The Falcones are before the planning board addressing site plan approval issues. The public hearing will be, was continued until February 12th, at which time the planning board will decide if they have enough information to render a vote and a decision on the restaurant. The front facade of 556 Adams is being replaced, it's updated ADA compliant and energy efficient with insulated glass, new doors, a new sidewalk, being funded by the applicant rather than the town. New street trees will be added in the spring. They were removed by the DPW because they were heaving the sidewalk. And the Falcones have agreed to install security cameras in this part of the square after consultation with the police chief and myself. The Falcone Companies have recently purchased the building at 450 Granite Ave. They'll be before the zoning board of appeals shortly to, to address some expected updates and future uses of that building. That's the one that presently has the Sprint store in it. Used to be Otis Equipment. And there, they'll be addressing some of the parking issues down in that area.
There is land behind that, isn't there? Is there sufficient land for parking behind that thing?
Lots of parking behind there.
Yeah.
Because they bought, they bought the house and the, there's a one-family house that's contiguous to that. They bought three pieces of land and it's, they'll create, most of it will be parking. It is a single-family house that's on that lot. Dolan Funeral Home is in the back, so they've expressed interest in, you know, working with Dolan on helping with some of the, you know, nighttime parking issues. They can help during the day with some of the parking issues in that, with the reuse of the building. Since I was here last, Milton Hill Apartments at 50 Elliott Street. It's 30 high-end apartments, construction's just about finished in the Mrs. Henry House, the yellow house next door. The project includes 27 units in the new building, two units in the soon-to-be refurbished Henry House, and one unit in recently constructed Carriage House in the back. Per the owner, the interest has been very good, more than half the units are already leased, and I've been starting to work with the owner to address the affordable units that will be coming to the town.
What's that process? How do you bring them to, how do you market them? And how do people qualify for them?
We'll do it through, it's a DHCD process, Department of Housing and Community Development, because we want those units on our SHI subsidized housing inventory. And it's...
What's the timeline on this? Because I know at 36 Central, there was complaints, it took forever.
It's a lottery system, so it's a matter of who runs the lottery.
There is a lottery system. They have a unit that they want to address right now. The other two we're working on, I know one of those affordables will be in the yellow house, so...
So two in the main building, one in the yellow house?
Two in the old building.
Oh, the old one?
The old one. And one in the yellow house. So we're bringing them on, but it's just, it's not fast, but we're getting them on. Since the last time I was here, in mid-December, the Planning Department hired its new assistant town planner, Tim Krasinski, it's Zerwinski. Tim has hit, it's Tim, it's easy, just Tim. Tim has hit the ground running reviewing the department's files, applications, and helping me coordinate with the multitude of ongoing efforts. You'll be seeing Tim at a lot of upcoming meetings, hopefully freeing up some of my nighttime meeting requirements.
We know he's been at the planning board. We've seen him at that on TV.
Yep. Actually, I have him going to the warrant committee with me tonight so that he can put a face to a person and see him. Some of the other issues here, 2 Adams Street. The potential buyer of 2 Adams Street and his rep will be going, his legal rep will be going before the planning board February 12th confirming the special permit, confirming the special permit requirements to make sure that they are still in line, that this is what's going to happen. So it's...
I was, I had almost written that off a dead.
And...
It would have been, it would have been a shame to write it, you know?
I know, I know. It just would have been so...
And it rises from the ashes.
No, it's good to see that moving forward. Back to the Falcone project, can you just go through the timeline? The zoning board of appeals is ruling on traffic or parking issues.
No, they're ruling on parking.
Not traffic, parking. Now, they've issued, verbally, they made a decision at their last meeting.
Yes.
But they have to issue a written order.
Yes.
What's the timing on that? And how does that interplay with the planning board process?
The zoning board of appeals will take the site plan approval from the planning board and incorporate it into their decision so that the issues that the planning board comes up with, for as much as they are enforced by the building inspector, they will also have the force of the, the special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
So the zoning board needs a decision from the planning board? Is that how it works? Not the other way around?
Yes. It's, you can't have, they need to go to the zoning board to address the use, and that's what they did. They need to go to the zoning board to get the parking straightened out. You go to the site plan approval to see how it affects the area. And those are the issues that the planning board is dealing with right now. They've looked at, they're looking at traffic circulation, they're looking at, they're, they're looking at the use, but they're looking at the use as it has an effect on the direct the butters in the area itself. Is the, could this particular entity overwhelm the square? Well, we know that's not going to happen. Is there an opportunity to have a public process of what's happening? And that's exactly what we're doing at site plan approval. We're discussing all of the issues that will have an effect on the square.
Well, a little bit later on, Chief Wells, under the traffic report, is going to talk to us a little bit about the valet and the loading dock.
Yes.
Issues that he talked at the planning board meeting about last week, so we'll, we'll get to that shortly, but there's nothing before us to vote on at this time on the Falcone proposal.
Correct.
But it is nice to see some revitalization happening.
Absolutely.
In the square. And I think they've done a nice job with the storefronts and the windows and...
The facade's beautiful right now. And that's even, even without the, the old theater park done yet, really.
Well, if you had...
I know Dennis, you had been into the view of the theater a while back. I finally went in to see it.
Yeah, I saw it.
It is interesting to go in and...
Yes.
And see it in its current form and think about the way it used to be.
If you had looked at the windows two months ago, you could take and literally put your finger through the wood that was on the side. Now, the whole thing is redone, all the glass is thermoglass. There were air conditioners that just, you know, in the transom above the door. Now, all of that's put onto the roof so that you don't see the mechanicals now, you don't hear the mechanicals. All of the, all of the entrances now are ADA compliant. The sidewalk will still have its brick band, it'll all be rebuilt, and it's being rebuilt on the Falcone's dime. The sidewalk is, will be smooth right now, the sidewalk is heaved and tipped in different places. Walking into the building, it's, it's a step up and then it tips down. The sidewalks have been tipped back at the building so that the basement has been filling with stormwater every time it rains. Now, it's, the sill has been replaced, the whole front facade has been rebuilt, the sidewalks have been brought down and lifted up so that they now drift, that they now drain to the street like they're supposed to. You can also now bring a wheelchair or someone on crutches into the building and there's no, no heaves, no bumps, and it all has the right degree of angle.
Do we, do we know if the, the restaurant that is being proposed there, is it just going to be a nighttime operation or...
No, we'll have lunch too.
We'll have lunch, okay.
It'll have a, it'll be similar to what Abbey Park has, that it has a, it probably will not be as big a lunch. I mean, Abbey Park has, I think there were 140 seats and they have 60 at lunch. And this will be the same kind of deal that you've got, you know, 60, 60 to 80 or something at lunch and you'll have more at dinner.
Right, right.
And it's because of the parking issue.
Yeah, and obviously, we've seen the tapes of the meetings and the butter issues that are being addressed and a lot of interest in this proposal and a lot of testimony being taken at the planning board, but...
That was a comment that Cindy Christensen made earlier about, at her meeting last night, I guess there was great support for this project. The issues of traffic were brought up, but they didn't think that they were, you know, insurmountable. There seemed to be a lot of support at that meeting last night for the, the new restaurant.
Right. It's not, it's not like you'd have a constant flow of 100 cars, it's just...
No. This is not a, this is a, this is going to be an establishment run by the same management team that runs Abbey Park. It's going to be a different format in that it, it's not going to be the American bistro that Abbey Park wants to be, it's going to be something different. I know what it is. I don't know that they've come out and said what, you know, what they want, but I know who they're looking for, for a restaurant. I know their theme and I think that people will be pleased with the theme.
Yeah, and the good thing is, is it does get, it does get people into the square. It does get people shopping, or even if it's window shopping, you know, it gets people coming back again.
A lot of the people that were at the meeting last night were talking about, they're there, they live in proximity to the square because they like what the square has to offer. They feel this is just one more option that they can take and they can walk to this restaurant. It's, to them, it's not a parking issue. When they get up and they start complaining about parking, they're not really complaining about parking as much as they're complaining about cut-through traffic, which is an entirely separate issue and has nothing to do with the restaurant.
Right.
I, I think that the Traffic Commission absolutely hears the cut-through traffic, we understand it, but at the same time, that's not this restaurant's fault and it's not going to be helped or hindered by this restaurant. I mean, they're two separate deals.
Yeah, and there's a lot of provision for parking under the plan, but, you know...
This, the restaurant itself will take down the two houses and create 25 parking spaces beside their own restaurant. They have 39 spaces in, the Falcones have 39 spaces in the, in 4 Franklin Street where their headquarters is. Because of the, the lease for Abbey Park, there is parking at Citizens Bank after 5:00. So there is plenty of parking. The Falcones have actually said, you know, look, we have other land and we'll, if we have to open it to parking, we will open it to parking. They're...
Right. They have a good valet system, that's...
And they are planning on that. And they are planning on that, so, I mean, that's, when the chief comes back up, he'll talk about, you know, the loading zone and the valet, and it will work, and we'll make sure that it works. All of that will be written out and spelled out in the decision from the zoning board and from the other issues. Trash pickup and stuff will be in the site plan approval.
Well, we don't play a role at this stage, but I do think it's appropriate for us to at least recognize that the sidewalk work, the trees, the cameras are all a benefit to the town and not something that an applicant necessarily would pay for, oftentimes that would be a town expense. So I think that's worth.
Absolutely.
Noting that that's something that the developer is doing in this case.
Yep.
We'll have a benefit for the square, but for the town at whole, as a whole, because that would normally come out of the capital budget or the DPW budget, so.
And part of that's to the credit of the developer, I mean, they're Milton, they're longtime Milton residents, and they care about the, they care about, they live here, they care about it.
Yeah, and I think revitalization of our business districts is something that we've all talked about at different times, whether it's the square or Milton Village or Central Ave. I think as a group, we all want to see some refurbishing of that area, those different areas, and a little more revitalization of the business districts.
Yeah.
And the Village, the Village, there are different issues there, but we need revitalization in that area as well.
Here's one where the developer's putting up his money and not asking for something, so.
Right.
It's a, it's a positive piece.
Right.
He's actually addressing several issues in the master plan, which is online, segue into the next section. The master plan is online, there are three sections. The first one has a CD in the back that has the other two sections, actually has all three sections. The Volume One and Volume Two are on the town's website, I don't think I put the third one on there. The third one is over 600 pages, and I'm not looking to kill anybody's computer. If you want a CD of it, we'll send you the CD. I know that we've given one to, Planning Board has them, the selectmen have them, the Master Plan Committee has them. A lot of other people, as they go by, it's, I'm giving it to them so that they can take it, look at it, review it. You know, check out some of the low-hanging fruit and see if we can address some of those issues. I think we have done that with, the East Milton Theater actually does that, it's one of the items in here, redevelop that area. One of the other ones was to talk about looking at Mechanic Street. Well, I think the Falcones and the Travis's are helping to address that situation.
Yep.
That'll be one of the new areas to start looking at. We have been looking at different places, so.
And when you really come right down to it, how difficult it is, and we all want to revitalize those business areas, but, you know, you think about what they once were, and they'll never be what they once were, they can still be vital, but they're gonna be different. You know, you're not gonna have a hardware store necessarily in them, and a lot of this normal retail that now is in big box stores, it just doesn't exist anymore in a small scale.
We don't want another 600-seat movie theater down there.
Right, you're not gonna see one. So you've gotta be innovative in terms of what works and trying to attract what works into those areas.
Yeah, I agree.
We're trying to do reuse that is, it's not overtaxing what the square has to offer, it's not overtaxing the neighborhood. 140-seat restaurant isn't going to do that out of that site.
Right.
Bill, I know you have to get downstairs to the Warren Committee, before you do, we were at the Warren Committee meeting last night, and here's Tim. Tim, do you want to come up and join us at the table?
First meeting, right?
We haven't been to the selectmen's meeting previously, so.
Good evening.
Welcome, Tim.
He's covered on our basis, right?
Our new Assistant Town Planner, Tim Zrwinzki, did I get that last?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Hi, Tim.
How are you?
Good.
I think we've all met you, but not the viewing, well, unless they're watching the Planning Board.
I'm not.
Well, then we should introduce ourselves.
Tom Harley.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
But I knew you're both going down to the Warren Committee.
Yeah.
And you're gonna be talking about your budget, but also about some of the non-budget articles that.
Yes.
Some probably that we've submitted, maybe they'll have questions about the Swift Hat House or something else, but Emery and Amy Dexter and Michael Blanchard were at the Warren Committee last night presenting all of our budgets. And we talked at the end of the meeting with Ted Hayes about his schedule, and we're gonna be talking about our Town Administrator article a little bit later on. So he said that after they get through the budget on the 25th of February, then they're gonna turn to all the non-budget articles. And they're gonna try to, the warrant goes to print the end of March, but they're gonna try to get a lot of that discussed during the first couple of weeks in March. So one that I wanted to ask you to maybe give us some advice on over the next couple of weeks, because when we had our sign review committee in here, we asked them, even though the sign review article is a citizen's petition, oftentimes the board of selectmen gets asked, what's the selectman's view on the citizen's petition? So we've asked the sign review committee to give us a little bit of advice. We have a citizen article on a condominium bylaw.
Yes.
And I know you're working with the condominium working group, maybe you could give us a little update, we've got about 10 minutes before you have to get downstairs. Could you give us a little bit of an update on where that group is at? And I think, at least, let's see if the board agrees, but I think might be a good thing is now that we have some extra planning resources, despite all the work on the ear rights you're doing over the expressway and all the other research, over the next couple of weeks, I think if you could give the board some feedback as to, you know, what the situation is with that article, obviously, we'd want to hear from the Planning Board and the condominium committee, but is there anything you can update us on, on that front?
Sure. The, that committee started, I guess, back in May, and they were given several weeks ago a copy of the citizen. They were given a draft before it was even turned in to the, to the selectmen for the December warrant closing. The citizen petition actually was a case where the developer knows that he doesn't want to have to wait until in October, in October 2015 town meeting, at which point the, that particular bylaw, if it passed, wouldn't become effective until February or March of 2016. So it would make them hold the land for an entire year. And you really can't come forward with your plans for development because you don't know that you're going to be able to do that kind of development. So the citizen petition got brought forward, it was submitted as a draft for discussion. It never really got traction from the committee. They didn't take and discuss it. They started going over it last night, it really wasn't something that, the committee really didn't have its heart in taking and discussing that.
Will they be taking it up at a later date?
They are due to meet March 5th, the Planning Board will meet on March 12th. The public hearing for that would be on March 12th. It was originally supposed to be on February 26th, but because of the next hearing, because they'll get the Planning Board to, the Townhouse Condo Committee will come up with, might come up with a recommendation, they might, they didn't say they would, they said they might, come up with a recommendation that they could give, they would at least have an understanding at the Planning Board what has been taking place at that committee, should they bring this thing forward. I know that you have a, you have a developer who's extremely interested in finding something that he can put onto a particular site, I mean.
The developer here is Mr. Hamilton with the Hillside Project.
Yes.
This is a 10 citizen article, so with the Planning Board, I'm just not clear of the process, would the Planning Board have a public hearing on it?
Because it's zoning, the Planning Board has to.
Even though it's a citizen article, okay.
Yes. The Planning Board has to have it because it's a zoning article. They'll hold a public hearing, they'll make a recommendation to the Warren Committee, Warren Committee to town meeting.
Okay, so at some point, there will be a Planning Board recommendation.
Yes.
Because I think, I think we'd want to hear what the Planning Board's thoughts are and what the condo working group's thoughts are.
I guess similar to fair, it could be totally rewritten by the Planning Board, yeah.
And that's exactly, that's true. For as much as this thing was put in, and there are, there are holes in it, I mean, I've seen the holes just by, it's one of those things, you've gotta read it and read it and read it, and then finally you start to figure out, wait a second, there's no, it doesn't say where you can put this. So right now, it's eligible for anywhere in town. It doesn't say what size lot it has to be or might be. So therefore, you need to, it does need to have some limitations put on it. You don't want to put it on a, necessarily on a one-acre site, you need to have some boundaries to it. There need to be some extenuating circumstances for developing in this manner on this particular site. And that's not written into the documentation that was submitted. So, yes, the new recommendation, or the recommendation from, whether it's the Townhouse Condo Committee or the Planning Board, will have some specifications in it. Now, those specifications would go, those get brought forward, it doesn't have to be accepted by the 10, but careful, thoughtful recommendations usually are, and in this case, I'm sure will be, accepted by the 10 signers?
Because it's a general, it's a general, I haven't read it in a lot of detail, but it's, but people have said there were some problems or technical issues.
Extremely general.
But it's a general article rather than really, it really would play anywhere, it's not site-specific.
Right. As written, it can happen anywhere. Realistically, when you read it, it should be in A or AA, because now you've got some land. Taking, putting it into a C is a 7,500, potentially a 7,500-square-foot lot. It makes no sense to do that kind of development that you could put multiple units. And there's no reason, there's no rhyme or reason as to why you chose that site, because that zoning doesn't say specifics of why. Your purposes are there, the purposes are, they're, they're, most of the feel-good purposes, you know, we're doing environmental, environmental protection, scenic view, historic preservation, I mean, they, it's the right buzzwords, but how do you take and fit those together now? You have to, it needs some help with the siting.
So what were those dates again for the public hearing? Could you just go over them one more time?
The Townhouse Committee, Townhouse Condo Committee's meeting on the 5th, it's the first Thursday in March. Planning Board is meeting on the 12th, second Thursday in the month, and they will take their recommendation from the 12th and give it to the Warren Committee. And I know that's late, but that's their schedule.
Okay, so the 12th will be the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on this?
No.
Or anything?
Actually, just one quick question. The charge of that condominium subcommittee is to ultimately come up with a condominium bylaw or zoning bylaw, or not, or just a study of the issue?
That's a good question, because there is no real charge. It was a group that was put together by the Planning Board. It was a series of individuals that was, they were chosen by the Planning Board Chair for some dealing with proximity of where they lived, some for their, their business, there's a Realtor, there's a Realtor on the, on the group, the head of a neighborhood association, another, two representatives from different, two other neighborhood representation, neighborhood representative groups. There is, I think it's easier to name some of the people on the group.
Architect?
There is an architect on the group, there's a town historian on the group. And they, they've tried to get, they tried to get a flavor of most of the parts of town, they are missing a few places in town. The meeting is open to the public, so there are several members of the public who do show up, and they've been at every single meeting. Some with interests of putting their property into play with this kind of development. Some, another Realtor who has the potential to sell one of these properties that he could then get, you know, there's a plus to it. Some of these projects have the habit of dragging the value of the homes around it up, not necessarily down. A lot of the townhouse developments that are around don't require the same services that a typical subdivision may have. It will have less in the way of town services, it may have greater density, but it doesn't use the same town services. It does have a habit of paying, because it's denser, you do make more than if it was a single-family home. So there's some pluses to this kind of development.
Such as the St. Pius development with the townhouses.
St. Pius, you've got, you know, 60-foot setbacks in the front, 30 on the sides. There is, there's a very manicured landscape that fits with it. And that's some of the things that we're looking to make sure that the zoning has for whatever project comes next.
So is the developer going to be meeting with the condo committee in this case?
He has not been invited to meet with them.
But he could go in.
Sure.
Could go in and meet with them. Because we're, it's submitted by one, for one development project, but it's a general article, I'm guessing there'd be different interested parties who'd want to weigh in on this article. So we're gonna be looking to, I think, to, now that we've got a.
Yeah.
Bigger planning staff and to give us some advice, kind of like we asked the sign review committee to tell us about that citizen petition. I think we'll need some input from you and one here at the Planning Board and the condo committee have to say. This may be something that we want to weigh in on at some point, or I think we'll be asked to weigh in on it. Anyone, anything else for Bill and Tim?
I don't.
Anything else, Bill?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you for, you're not going downstairs for more questions?
I'm sure you'll think of some, and you know where I am.
All right, thank you for the update, and, Tim, thanks for stopping in and.
Nice meeting, everybody.
Nice meeting, Joe.
Welcome aboard, we're happy to have you. Come on up, chief, we're up to you next on the traffic rules. We'll go back to number six on our agenda.
Should have brought a pillow.
I was thinking of it when I was there, huh? You wanna stay, you can stay, here, you can stay. And then we can go to the deck after, after, um. I raised my hand, I apologize, because I wanted to say to you, I felt like Deborah Phelps, and she always raises her hand at our Traffic Commission meetings, we don't take questions. But one of the questions that was asked, talked about improvements, to the things in the square that you asked before this Howard Stein Hudson implement, you know, before we get to actually operational, is that the biggest thing we've done is to change, we created the flow.
Yes.
Because we saw very quickly how there was such a big, it was really a big improvement. The second thing that we learned just recently, and I felt it all along, and a good example of it was, and I'll come back to it after we talk about this, was when the protests in the square, we used that slip lane like a valve, you could open it and close it, if it were not there. So if we went with plenty and the slip lane no longer exists, because of the gridlock we have in the square that day.
Right.
It just puts so much pressure on that area.
Yeah.
It gave us a valve, open and close it, because the big thing was pulling traffic northbound and Granite Ave. So as Bill knows, at least for me as chair, my vote, I've been adamant that we keep it. And, but that, when we talk about, that's the big change you've made that's really gonna be like, that was your first step towards where you're going a year from now.
One thing I've kind of noticed too, and I think I mentioned to Bill, is I don't think it's a fluke, because it seems to be pretty consistent. Now, the traffic's flowing better from Quinn. The traffic's flowing better from Quincy on Granite Ave into the square. But what it's created now is when you go over the Wood Street Bridge at 5:00 or so, the traffic is horrendous trying to get through that intersection up there, because it's a difficult... You've got no line of sight behind you. You've got just traffic coming. You're trying to get over to the right. You can't get over, and it just backs everything up.
So that... Not that I wanted to go here right now, but just to, you know, this Granite Ave street spot, this whole Mass Highway thing at 2 Granite... This was not on anyone's radar screen, on the whole Howard Stein Hudson.
No, not at all.
But it's a simple line on the same street.
Yeah.
It's all Granite Ave. And there was a time when we actually had talked as a traffic commission about the possibility of taking that Wood Street aisle and actually putting a set of working traffic lights.
I know. I pointed to that.
Just to try and help with the... Because you're right. If you get caught in that, you're gridlocked. There's nowhere to go. And I just... I think we, as Bill said, we have to have the conversation to see what improvements or how we can help the whole East Milton area with two projects without having some nexus between them. You just have to have it.
Right. Exactly.
You know, it may be small, but it could be big. And I... I don't know, but sitting here and just listening and closing my eyes and just... We moved to Pear Street when I was six years old. And then my father bought the house at Granite Place when I was eight. All five of my brothers. We walked to school, first St. Agath's, then to the public schools, Cunningham, and then to high school. You said the word tonight, and I think it's the first time I've heard the term used, revitalization. It's true. You know, the 5 and 10's gone. There aren't, you know, the five...
They're not coming back.
They're not coming back.
I wish that old 5 and 10 would come back.
Tell a lie. Yeah, it's not coming back. And the funny thing is, had they brought the theater back, that would have really had 600 seats. But you really, really, and I feel this somehow, not so much as police chief, but just living here and growing up in that section of town, that... And I... You're really on the brink of creating something very special for this town and that area. And I think when this is all said and done, and all this is done, I mean, we're always going to feel the pressure. We live this close to Boston. You know, the commutes, the... But I think East Milton and the walking destination, being able to go from those is really going to be something very nice for our community that did not exist five years ago.
True.
But we'll be here for tomorrow and not just, you know, for our children and the few going forward. And I think it's really something really special for us.
It would be really nice to see in the square. And I think it was in the Howard Stein Hudson report when they did, is you've got the fruit center, which is great.
It's booming.
It's a great retail center. You don't really feel that it's part of East Milton. Quite... It's kind of like...
It's...
It's, you know...
Two sides. There's two sides to East... You're right. It's two sides.
To connect those two so that they feel more like one would be...
I gotta give some credit to the chamber too, because those people that work there, now that's their livelihood. They're very gracious to us when we meet with them. I mean, they're very... And it's hard, but they're very, you know, they're vested their whole lives down there, a lot of them, you know? They've been there for... Whether it's the Magno's or, you know, Grown and Christie's or Stella's, or they've been there a long time, a lot of them, and just they're really waiting for this. I would have... I said this many... I said this to the planning board. I didn't know what to think when you were going to... When you brought an 88 WAF and steel and rye. And that was my first year chief. Like, we've got that place that sells liquor. Okay, you know, we had the Legion Post and the KSC. The KSC didn't even have a liquor... And Wallaston Golf Course. But these have really been success stories. I mean, Bravo TV came here and filmed at Steel and Rye. That's a national... That's a national TV show. Great in some hiccups, but it was a national show that came here. It's just, we've had two big movies filmed there in the last three years. There were some very special things about this community, and this is only going to be one more of them. And when it's all said and done, I think people are going to be really happy when it's done.
A and E did Abbey Park.
Oh, yeah. A and E... They already canceled after the first action.
But it happened.
Yeah, they did. So that was my pre-going attack. Because I... In answer to that question, you did one vote, did one big thing for East Milton Square when you took that photo. Just to try and implement it. And I look at today, a lot of people probably forget that you could drive straight.
There were a bunch of people that... That thought that...
I was.
I'm not going... I'm not letting my people go because this isn't going to work. And inside of 20 minutes, wow, it does work. I mean, I was getting calls, people saying, it's taken me too long to go pick up somebody down in Quincy. And they thought about it, and I'm like, well, wait a second. Is it that it's taking you too long, or is it that you can't go 30 miles an hour anymore? This is our walkable center. You want it to be walkable. I want you to know that the lights are on and what the name is on that store. I don't want you to know that the lights are on and you have no idea what's in there. And after asking that question several times, people started to understand, and they said, well, you're right. Because now I go through and I have... I'm going slower. I can look, and I can see what's happening. And I don't really need to park in front of the door. I can actually park a block down and walk back, because I know it's open. I know it's still back there. So it's...
The other thing that's done too is because you don't have Adams Street going through there anymore, a lot of people, including me, if I'm going towards Quincy, I'll go Boulevard or... Is that Boulevard? You know, along the highway towards...
Bryant Ave. Bryant Ave on the highway.
It's just easier.
Going to Quincy.
On Quincy.
And take a left going through their streets.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Dan Ramondi love hearing you say that.
But he's paying taxes in Quincy.
Bill, before Ted Hayes sends out the search... We've got to get you downstairs. So let's go on to the two changes you want, and then we'll let Bill go, and we'll let... And we'll talk with the chief about the valet parking. So we've got a couple of motions regarding Patricia Drive and Brayburn Road.
You can do those. He can handle those.
Yeah, I can do those. I'll do those. So I'll be quick on those. So we have three voteable requests. This is pursuant to the traffic commission meeting that we had on the 21st of January. So the first one is to add no parking signs. This is an extension of something you've already done in the past. It's more of a nighttime parking of kids trying to go up to discourage it. We want to add no pa... Extend the no parking ban in front of 37, 51, and 58 Patricia Drive.
Any questions for the chief on that?
Not really.
That came from the residents. That was a request from the residents of those houses.
Okay. And then Brayburn Road?
Brayburn Road. And we thought we were going to get away with this. This is a request for a stop sign at the intersection of Brayburn and the intersection of Pleasant. Somehow, it's the only street intersecting that section. Pleasant does not have one, so we want to add one there.
And that was an inquiry from the neighborhood, wasn't it?
That was a... Same thing resident there. Yeah. That came through Deputy Chief King.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the following amendments to the traffic rules and orders. Article 5, Section 1, Patricia Drive installed no parking signs in front of numbers 37, 51, and 58 Patricia Drive. Article 8, Section 12, Brayburn Road installed stop sign at Brayburn Road at the intersection of Pleasant Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you, chief. So do you want to say a few words about the valet parking and the loading down at the...
So going back to way, as you know, as I alluded when I first walked in, you're on the brink of doing some special things. So obviously, in listening to the planning board and listening to the ZBA, there were two things that came up. First was, for their point of view in this, was the pa... As you know, they were all discussing parking. And then I believe it came from the planning board. I think the first email I got from you was they were discussing about authorizing valet parking. And anything that goes on a public way in the town of Milton, ultimately rests with you. So if they weren't up, you know, valet at Milton Hospital, maybe Milton Hospital could apply to them for that. But right now, valet parking or anything on a public way that's going to regulate a space or flow of parking and traffic rests with this board. So we immediately pulled Boston's regulations and Cambridge's. And there were two things that we thought of on the valet first was, we knew that the neighbors on Church Street really were very upset, didn't want that new parking lot to be valet. The Falcones, and you said it, this is a family who's lived here the whole... They're really doing this for their father, who always wanted all this, who this is a labor love for them. This isn't an LLC that we're never going to hear from. This isn't Walmart. This is a family who cares about creating something for their community. And they were very amenable when we talked to them about the possibility of creating valet parking that they could share and structuring a valet regulation to be approved by you with a permitting system similar to the hardship and service zone, more similar to the hardship than the service zone, to the hardship parking permits that currently exist, they can apply annually. And in this case, it's really pretty easy, because it's two restaurants side by side. They'd be able to share this valet service. The good thing was, we know how much pressure you get constantly. Howard Stein Hudson, there was a lot of... Are they taking any spaces? Are we adding any spaces? Are we... So in this case, even though we took three spaces, we will ultimately recommend three spaces in the East Milton section on Adams Street by Franklin. You're going to create a permanent loading zone during the day that is all being done illegally now. They're parking Franklin Church. It gets them off of Church and Franklin. Put some on Adams. Put some in a regulated place that stores can share themselves. They can set up and regulate when they want to have their deliveries, days of the week. But then, 5:00 takes those same three spaces, dual purpose like Boston does, and converts them to valet. So we are working on the draft for you to have... We want to have this ready quickly, like March, the permitting process, March, and have this ready to go so that if... Who ultimately is going to give them the final approval? The planning board? Is that who's going to give them the final okay to...
Well, site plan, and then the parking was the zoning board of appeals, which already made a... They probably...
I got that right. So it's going to go back to the ZBA ultimately?
Yeah.
Well, I guess the planning board will get wound up into the ZBA. But they're separate issues.
So we want to have this ready when they do. And I was very... And I would never have gone to the planning board first with this, but there were two things. One, the planning board was thinking about creating something on their own. Two, it was just so much banter back and forth. And what was, was that we felt that, from the traffic commission point of view, that we were doing something that not just was alleviating and creating a structure for two things that would have to exist if this is approved, but took the pressure off the neighborhood, which you could see those neighbors about as a looking for. So that's how we developed it in such a way.
It'll probably help traffic flow too, because you still have people loading, you know, trucks. I saw one like 4:00, 4:30 the other afternoon, double parked.
Oh, definitely, absolutely. Right now, because right now, there's nowhere to go. So today, if, like, I'm going to jump to the Central Ave, because the second place we're going to recommend one, this John Thompson designed this one, is for a loading zone in the Central Ave Business District. So Central Ave today, the liquor store is taking a delivery with the truck facing the wrong way on the Central Ave side of the road with a big... It took like five spaces. There was nowhere to park. And I have not seen this mass works improvements, but I know that you're going to make some changes down there shortly, not to even go near what's going to happen at 131, but just some curbing. So we're going to have to have a loading zone there, because those businesses depend on it. So John has picked an area between Morton and Brook Hill that will work for that. Same thing, loading zone during the day. I don't think his valet is on private, but they would be functional spaces for customers to use at night, going to.
It would be a loading zone on the side street, not on...
No, no, no. On Elliot. I keep saying. I keep saying. It's going to be the Central Ave business loading zone, but it'll be on Elliot from Brook Hill, between Brook Hill and Morton Road. Yeah. I said the same thing. Sometimes I get myself spun up on all these streets. But the skin in that one will dual purpose, the spaces, because in the... I'm not sure who... I don't know, was the Central Ave project, was this some mitigation from the Milton Hill project that they paid to pave that section of the street?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in the sidewalk, they striped three additional spaces that weren't there before, that would be legal spaces. So that will be the loading zone during the day, three spaces at night. So we're going to try and use this to maximize for both in East Milton and... I mean, I've listened to the residents there, and I never had been with planning board meeting before in my life, and I've watched them, I've heard what they've said, and I... We are cognizant of them, but I do think in the long run, the pressure of the traffic in the square, it's commuter traffic. It's the push day from Quincy South and then coming back home at night. It's not really... You're going to have more parking in the square than you've ever had, ever. The deck is adding spaces. They're adding spaces. We haven't had that. So these are some really good things, and I think that when it's all said and done, you're always tweaking things anyway, but you've really made some really quality of